A 6:00 PM public hearing, special permit for Greenwich Restaurant, 14 Maple Street. Something to read in?
Certainly. Planning board of the town of Easton Meadow will hold a public hearing on March 8, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room of the Town Hall, 60 St. Square, Easton Meadow, Massachusetts. An application of Greenwich of Easton Meadow, all-seat open restaurant at 14 Maple Street. Information relating to this application is on file with the planning board and available for review by the public. For the planning board, Ty Richards, clerk.
That's all we have. Okay, this is a special permit, so it is a public hearing. So I will ask you to come up, explain.
Well, I'm not sure, we're short of the owner, I guess. Harry isn't here, so I'm not sure.
Do we know if he's coming?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so I'm not even sure.
He knows about the hearing.
Somebody's coming down the hall.
Yep.
Is he very, very tall?
Is that Harry?
No.
Nope. Well, maybe he's representing him.
All right. Well, he's not here, he's not here yet, so.
Well, can we continue for 15 minutes?
That's all they're hearing for?
Yeah, that's all you're hearing for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have other things that you're doing?
Yeah. Yeah, we have issues.
Oh, okay, can you, is it possible to do that and then be an interim?
You want to move to continue in?
Move, continue the meeting, the hearing for 15, to 15 minutes from now.
And then Mark can.
Second time.
Okay. All those in favor for the continuance?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to jump to our next person. Mark, how are you?
Pretty well, thank you.
Would you like to come up?
See you, Eric.
Yes, please, Ralph Page. Yes. Would you read that? Yes.
Mrs. McDonald, I am a teacher at EL Easton Meadow High School, and at the behest of Principal Flanagan, we are developing a new course for next year entitled Community Action Project Learning. The course is modeled after something called problem-based learning, a teaching method originally developed for medical students where they are placed in small groups and given a problem to solve. Instructors facilitate by helping students focus problems, define potential strategies, contact the right people, read the right, read the right relevant information, et cetera. The model uses the problem to provide the incentive to learn necessary skills, methods, and/or info in order to formulate possible solutions. I know the town boards and departments usually have wish lists of projects that they'd love to get to if they only had the manpower, money, and/or time. Do you have projects or ideas for Easton Meadow that relate to your mission and which students in a high school setting might be of help? Perhaps you could mention our new course at your next meeting and contact me with ideas. This is a new course, so we're hoping to open a continuing dialogue with groups like yours regarding areas where we might be of help. Thank you very much, Mark Green, technology, engineering teacher.
Pretty much says it all, huh?
It does. So I just really wanted to reach out to the boards, you know, and ask if you had ideas of projects that we could work on, and things that would, it would be a small group setting, two, three, or four students. We're envisioning for the few, probably in the fall, run for the first time in the fall. And it would be, you know, projects that, you know, as I mentioned before, that perhaps you would like to get to but really haven't been able to. I know, I live in a little town, I know the, there are always projects and things that they'd love to get done, but, you know, there isn't really anybody to take it on, so.
What type of projects have you toyed around with, troubleshoot with?
What type of?
Projects have you been troubleshooting with?
Well, so far, we, you know, it's a brand-new idea, and we're really still, you know, figuring out what we're gonna, what we're gonna do and, you know, defining, you know, the whole notion of the course. But giving you an example, one of the examples that we learned about is of a school that had a small parking area for students and was always full, so the students took that on as a challenge to try and find a solution. And so, you know, they looked at different options, public transportation, encouraging students to ride their bicycles, to, you know, get kids to walk, to do, anyway, what they came up with for a solution was to create an online place where students could carpool, get together and carpool, and so, you know, that was an example that we were told about.
A good example.
You know, so the thought is that it would be some sort of a community-based thing, but it really could be lots of different things. I mean, if you had a, you know, trails that are overgrown or something, maybe that would be something, you know. So I was thinking of, you know, conservation and recreation, you know, some of the different boards, and this is just a, you know.
My mind's turning.
Initial.
Definitely.
Yeah, I went to the resources that you pointed out to me, and one of the big areas that they talk about is sustainability. And one of the issues in town, in fact, everywhere right now, is stormwater management, particularly from homes and new developments and things like that. All of the stormwater in town goes directly to the local creeks and streams. It isn't treated at all, except through the catch bases. And we did adopt new regulations on this, but a lot of it is educating people about dealing with stormwater or water that's used outside on their own lots. And that can come to, you know, reconfiguring the slopes, so instead of when you water a lawn, it doesn't run off into the street, runs onto the lawn. You know, when you wash your car, it doesn't go down into the catch basin, those kinds of things. It's an area that is of particular interest to me, because I helped work on the regs, but I know that the issue of education is really important there, because a lot of people don't realize that this is what happens. So that's one area. Another completely different one that is a pet peeve of mine is, and I know, and it can be done about this, is the pickup lines at the schools at the end of the day, particularly on Maple Shade Avenue and on Porcha Street. Okay? Porcha Street, they go from, you know, all the way, the entrance to the school, all the way back, past Pilgrim, okay? And they're all just parked there, and that's not a street that's wide enough to really allow you to go past that safely. So, and again, I don't know what the solution is, if there is one, but it's something to throw at them.
Sure. Well, it's part of that because, you know, people trying to avoid having to pay for busyn.
Yeah.
That could be part of it, you know, solutions maybe, they're dismissed at a little bit different time rates or something.
Organized or something, right. Sure. We're just looking for ideas.
Two things off the top of my head.
Can I, can I intervene?
Yeah.
You mentioned recreation, the recreation fields that we have, for instance, Pine Knoll, Heritage Park, things like that. The condition of them, being the overgrown, you had mentioned overgrown, the divots, the potholes, things of that nature, how to be able to come up with a viable economical solution to tend to our youth field program with the recreational department, not necessarily on the high school sport fields.
Sure. That would be, sure, we could look into that also. The stormwater one that you, that you mentioned, how about rain barrels? Was that, is that the type of thing, or were you looking for?
That's one possibility. Another thing I've seen, I'm not trying to propose solutions, I've seen is marking storm drains, that this goes to.
Right. I'm aware of those.
This goes to the brook.
Those, the little signs that say, you know, these lead to the Connecticut River or whatever the local.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Waterway is, yeah. Sure, that would be.
But the kids hopefully would get creative and come up with something different.
Right.
Ongoing, are you looking for us to give you suggestions going forwards consistently? Is it just, want us to group together a list of ideas?
Sure, that would be fine. And, yes, in an ongoing way, you know, to, I'm thinking that, you know, some students will probably have ideas on their own, you know, but others may need a little bit of help, you know, so it'd be nice to have a pool of possibilities.
Michael, any thoughts?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, I mean, you guys have all brought up great suggestions, I'm sure other departments will have some as well.
Yeah. Robin.
And to that end, I have told Mr. Green he was going to come to the Conservation Commission tomorrow night.
Okay.
This is Michael Carrabetta, he is on the Conservation Commission, and he lives out of town, so it's a, it's a good trick, so he's not going to be able to come to the meeting tomorrow night, if you could bring it to your commission.
Certainly.
To tell them the same thing.
Speaking of officials before a board, of the type, it's one of the types of activities we really want the kids to be doing, you know, so.
Yep.
I just wanted to make, let it, let you know that we're here, you know, that we're developing this and that, you know, that we'll be looking for.
You can open conversation.
Yeah, right, to, right, to get the.
So literally, it would be trying to get the students to come in, talk to a board, get some thoughts, group together, come up with some suggestions, some ideas.
Exactly.
And find a way to get those enacted? Is that what the whole process is?
The model is that you put students in the middle of a, of some sort of a project or problem, and they have to learn how to deal with it, you know, so part of it might be learning, you know, a little bit of personal and professional poise, and, you know, coming and speaking before officials, or, you know, it could also be learning a little bit about the background of, you know, a particular issue, it could be laws, regulations, rules, and all those kinds of things that.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a really nice idea. Very good.
And I think what we'll try and do as a board is come up with some thoughts and suggestions, and we'll funnel them through Robin, if that's okay, to turn around and send you some, and we'll try and get you a nice little list going.
That'd be terrific.
That sounds great.
I'm happy kids come before you. You just said you wanted them to be talking to officials, so.
Right. But we have to funnel in first to find out which ones you want to drop the kids into, so.
And this isn't, isn't going to happen really till the fall, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Good, it gives us plenty of time to think about it, and there's always, always stuff going on. Mark, thank you so much for coming in. It was very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, great idea.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to reopen the public hearing that was just continued for Greenwich Restaurant, 14 Maple Street. If you'd like to come forwards. Welcome.
Hi. It's a nice camera angle. I have more hair facing this way than I do this behind me.
Hallelujah.
Hey, we got you both ways now.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit?
Sure. My name's Harry Cromwell, I'm an operator of restaurants in the area. Been in the business a number of years, more than I care to admit, and this is a proposed development we have for an existing site in the town that everyone's quite familiar with, it's really right across the street. We think we need, since we are not doing anything exterior to the building, it's all internal, we think we need all the requirements for the site. Contemplated use is a high-end salad wrap and sandwich store. If you are familiar with concepts of chopped and sweet green, then this would be very, very similar to it. Our proposed use also contemplates that we will have sandwiches, and that we will serve beer and wine. One of the issues that we have in this location, if I could take some time to tell you how I approached the site, was that it dies here at night. And, and we felt that there were a couple of things that were important. One was that we have some hope of doing business with, at night, and that we think that the beer and wine will help us accomplish that. Also, this concept has a high skew to the female. And we thought that adding sandwiches would help encourage male use of the restaurant. So we've added those two types of things in addition to the concept that I earlier referred to, which is sweet green or chopped. Additionally, we feel that we may be able, by having sandwiches and wraps, also be able to cater to businesses in the local area. We have a number of industries nearby, and we are trying to take all the different elements of a successful venture in here and try to incorporate them so that we have as good a chance of succeeding as possible. I've owned restaurants for a number of years, and I can tell you that until you open the doors, you sometime, you really don't know what you have. And so, we're, we're attempting to cover the bases, as I mentioned. The con, the use is, we're not changing anything in the exterior. We may change, we will change colors, but in some regards, it's very close to what's there, and we will have signage that obviously will be different, and it will be in compliance with whatever the regulations are as, as needs be. The interior plan is fairly straightforward. We have a plan, and I have the direct attention to it, so we will have 52 seats as a maximum, and that is based on a parking seating ratio that is mandated by the town, and we believe is, has been documented over the years, either previous uses or the, or the requirements. We do have people who can speak to that here, and, but we've gone through it pretty thoroughly and feel that we're in compliance. This is, unlike my other restaurants, which are Burger Kings, KFC, and things like that, I am relieved to tell you we're not requesting a drive-through again. So we do feel we have sufficient parking on site, and as you know, there is street parking that is also available, and that the seating that we have laid out is within, within. There really is not much more that I can say in terms of the concept. I think it will be a welcome addition to the area. I've opened, as I said, a number of restaurants, both on the corporate side for McDonald's and Burger Kings, which I own, and KFCs, and I have not had as favorable a response to this type of concept in this area. It seems that it's a real niche that has not been filled. People like to have healthier eating, and, and there really is nothing comparable to it in the area. You have to go to a major metro market to see such as Boston, New York, DC, and it has extremely high pedestrian traffic to see something similar to this. So not having that pedestrian traffic, I think the location is, speaks volumes in favor of the success of the unit, and I think the different types of, different lines of product, beer and wine, and premium sandwiches will help us be a success at this site. I really have nothing else I can say, and soon will answer any questions that you have.
Couple things, I see that the signage does meet our.
We're not doing signs.
I was going to say, that would be a separate application, correct?
Yes.
Separate permit. So with the 52 seats here, we would need, what, 17 roughly spaces, and that's been achieved? How many?
Fifty-two, you'd actually need 18.
Eighteen?
Yep.
Okay, and how many spots are there available?
According to the 2010 parking plan that was signed by the planning board at that time, the restaurant was given.
The public parking right away?
Nope, they were given 18 spaces for a maximum of 54.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Before we go any further, because this is a special permit, you need a supermajority, which is four out of five members. There's only four members present. You have the option of continuing it to another time when there's a fifth member, or going on tonight. It's, it was my fault, I forgot that you have that option, but.
We haven't voted yet.
Do I also have the option of coming back, since there's not a?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you have the option that we can just continue this.
Okay.
Until there's five members, or you can go on with the four members, and you would need all four of us to vote in favor of it.
Let me look at you more closely.
We're being sized up now.
I think we will proceed if we can.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. George, any questions?
No, I, I will say, I have reviewed the parking plan, both of the predecessor restaurant and of yours, and I, you know, we did allow that number of spaces for the predecessor restaurant, and it did not seem to cause any issues. So, plus, we're all aware of that, although we can't count it, there is public parking adjacent to there. So if there is overflow, there usually is room there, unless the, we've got the fair going on or something like that, but in any case, so I, yeah, I have reviewed it, and it's pretty straightforward to me.
I think another thing, just quickly, is that, you know, the, the other use on the property is a low-intensity use, and although you can't count that in your calculations because of the nature of the permit, the, the application, we feel that there'll be more than enough parking on the site. Particularly, since we are, I'm hoping to be a lunch-oriented business with dinner I have, I, I don't see a problem, and I'll be very honest with you, in my other operations, I can, I can tell you which restaurants we have problems at. And when we go into a site, I'm looking at a site now in Wilberham for fast food, and I think that parking is problematic. So I'm, I'm trying to get out, because it doesn't serve my interest not to have my customers on the property. So I am looking for an alternative site. And this site here, I really don't see that we will max out the parking with the street parking and the additional parking that's adjacent to the site.
Michael, any questions?
No, I like it. I think it would be a great fit, it'd be a great, great attribute to the town, so.
It'd be nice to have something in there, different.
Are you looking, any jukebox, any, any type of entertainment, TVs or anything?
We, we work TVs, you know, that is a trend that is, is very prevalent in the industry now, all restaurants, a lot of them, a lot of them have TVs, and all of them are, we will provide Wi-Fi, that's another thing that's almost mandatory in the industry now. Other than that, the only entertainment you will see is if I'm approved, I will be dancing in front of it. But that's it. No, we're not.
I knew you were going to say that.
You mentioned.
Would that be considered a floor show?
So you're looking to do lunch and dinner?
Lunch and dinner, we will not open for breakfast, at this time, we just don't think that the concept fits with breakfast. Breakfast is one of the most difficult day parts to enter, because people's habits are so deep. And so we do not think that we can take a salad concept and move it to a breakfast concept, so I am not anticipating.
What were your proposed hours of operation at this?
I think, you know, some of it is to be determined, because I have no real idea of how this concept will do in this area and how late at night it will go. I can tell you that I don't see it having any strength or volume past seven o'clock. I just don't see it in this area. If that happens, I will be very happy, but I, in any eventuality, I don't anticipate being open past 10 or 9. I just, my sense of the area, I'm from the area, and I drive through here frequently, and more frequently since I made this application, and it, it's pretty dead here at night, so I don't see.
It's quiet.
It's quiet. It's one of the reasons we like.
We hope to have.
What were the hours asked for in the special permit?
I'm sorry?
What were the hours asked, asked for in the special permit?
I'm not even sure whether you specified.
I probably would have done 10 to 10, but I don't think it'll be that.
It's just under the special permit, hours of operation has to be included. Doesn't mean you have to stay open that late, but if you say, let's say, 10 in the morning to 11 at night, and you decide to close at 9, that's fine. You just can't stay open later.
Understood.
So we, we should ask you, would you like at your window for hours of operation, so we can break into the?
That would be the max.
10 to 10, 10 AM to 10 PM.
I see no possibility of going beyond 10.
And would that be seven days a week?
I would, I would think that it would be six days a week at the maximum, I, Sunday, it might be a 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, or something like that.
Being that it's a special permit, you may want to go with 7, correct?
Yeah, but would you rather request 7?
You might want to request 7.
Yes, I think I would.
So it's seven days a week? Monday through Sunday? No.
Yeah, seven days a week.
9 to 10.
10 to 10.
10 to 10.
10 to 10.
Sunday.
Under a special permit request, like I said, we like to try and cover all bases. So we had touched on entertainment, and you said possibly down-the-road TVs or not, or?
Yeah, I have not determined that. I like to have that as an option, but I, you know, I have, I put TVs in my other restaurants and, and thinking that it would help encourage frequency of visit, and often you go in and no one's watching in the TV's office. It's not the draw we ever thought it would be, it's just an accommodation.
I just, like I said, and part of my concern is I don't like to make someone come back to change their special permit. I'd rather something be in there and you not use it, than to have to go through a public hearing request and everything again.
Delete the dance floor and add the TVs.
Go ahead. Robin?
Board of Health?
All Board of Health, we can open it up to the public first, we're not.
Yeah, we have to, yeah, I'll get to that.
All right, I just want to make sure.
At this time, I'd like to open it up to public for any comments. Mr. Smith, anything? Would you like to add something?
Good. I love it.
Of course.
I know Chalk, so I know that restaurant very well.
Okay, could we have your name and address for the record?
Steven Schelberg, and I'm one of the owners of the building, my dad owned it.
Okay. Okay, I will bring it back to the board, and.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before motions made, I would just, we had a discussion with regards to the parking plan. The parking plan is the 2010 plan, which was provided by Smith Associates, which shows 18 spaces available for a restaurant that had been there. It also shows the nail salon next door, and it states that there's seven spaces available for that nail salon. So I just wanted to make sure everyone realizes what we're going off of, so that if the nail salon changes in the future or whatever, we know that they've been provided seven spots, the restaurant's been provided 18.
You mentioned the number of seats. To me.
Fifty-two.
I did. You're requesting?
Right.
52 seats based on the parking plan? There's 18 spaces, which allows them up to 54, and you're requesting 52?
Oh, he was, I was going to say that.
Yes, he was requesting.
It actually does say.
What were you talking about the seating plan?
52 proposed, 54 max. Yeah.
One was for Boston Chicken, and one is for them.
Yeah, and you said 50.
I know.
All right.
Just reminding you, what you brought up to me.
The one for Boston Market actually showed a total of 50 seats in there, and I know we had stated that you weren't looking for any more than that, even though the parking plan says that you're allowed up to 54. Are you still looking at 52, or are you going to stay with 50 that Boston Market had?
I have 52 laid out, I like to stay with that, if it's within your guidance.
So it's on the plan.
Okay, any other questions, actually? We have criteria that we have to meet. Special permit criteria, I will, if it's okay with the board, read through all of it, and then we can take a vote on whether or not they meet the criteria for a special permit. Following general standards and conditions, in addition to the specific standards and conditions set forth in the dimensional and density regulations, shall be met before a special permit can be granted by the special permit granting authority. A, the specific site must be in appropriate location for the use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be no nuisances such as noise, et cetera, or safety hazards created. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. Appropriate screening by walls, fences, planting, or other devices shall be provided for parking areas. Exterior features or appearance will not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Number and design of access drives and tracks. Number and design of access drives and traffic features shall be adequate for intended use, and uses must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaws.
I would offer the opinion that since this restaurant is going into a place where there was a restaurant, that the criteria were met.
Agree with that.
I would concur. Make a motion to approve the special permit?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We wish you best of luck.
Look forward to seeing something in there.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that one of your jackets left there?
No, that was.
No?
What else do we have going forwards? Six is done, six fifteen. Request for waiver of site plan review, Tiger Press, Fifty Industrial Drive.
Property owner is Shafi Real Estate LLC. Owner's address is Fifty Industrial Drive. Name of proposed business is Tiger Press. Owner of business is Riza Shafi. Business owner's address is Fifty Industrial Drive. Property address is Fifty Industrial Drive. Property district is Industrial Garden Park. Allowed use, yes. Proposed hours of operation, no change. Number of employees, including owner, no change. Date of last parking plan with copy of the same, no change. Summary of business operation, install solar array on roof of building. Solar panels will not be visible from the street. Approximately twenty-four hundred solar panels will be installed. Number of commercial vehicles, no change. Amount of product storage, no change.
So it's simply a waiver to allow solar panels to be placed on the roof?
Yes.
This is something we've done in the past.
Yep, that's Walgreen.
Yep.
They're allowed to do it on the ground, but they only want to do it on the roof, so.
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. We have a request for waiver of site plan review, Affordable Expert PC Services LLC, 624 North Main Street.
Property owner is Robert Bolduc. Owner's address is 246 Cottage Street, Springfield, Mass. Name of proposed business is Affordable Expert PC Service LLC. Owner of business is Emmett Howen II. Business owner's address is 7 Upper Church Street, apartment 308, West Springfield, Mass. Property address is 624 North Main Street, East Salomon. Property district is business, allowed use, yes. Proposed hours of operation, Monday, Wednesday, Monday and Wednesday, eleven thirty to six. Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, nine AM to six PM, Saturday, nine AM to five PM. Number of employees, including owner, is two. Summary of business operation, sales and repairs of computers, mobile devices, office equipment, and other consumer electronics. No commercial vehicles and no product storage.
So it's a computer business going into the business district?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Plus, Pac was not ready for their waiver, so that's not on. The only thing is minutes.
Nope, we have, well, let's go, we'll start with the minutes. February twenty-third, I did my corrections and submitted them, as everyone else had a chance to look at them.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Michael, you get a chance to look at them?
I did.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you can just change and just write your name under it.
Okay. Under administrative issues, we have hair salons and massage parlors. I noticed, when I was in, talking to Robin, the massage parlors are supposed to, every year, submit to us their licenses and I believe a list of employees, and I believe some have, some haven't. So I was asking the board if we should send a letter to the ones that haven't, just to remind them that this is a yearly thing and you need to submit it.
I think it's a great idea.
Absolutely.
Sure.
I don't think we need a motion for it.
Nope.
So we will craft a letter just basically requesting that they update their files. The next thing is, at our last meeting, it was brought to our attention with regards to Mario's, that we had an included keynote in with their entertainment license. And I said, it was brought to our attention that we had never done it for Bentley's. So I had asked the board to allow us to submit a letter to Bentley's, asking for them to come in so that we could add it to their special permit. Upon further research, I have found through the state of Massachusetts, the state does not consider keynote to be entertainment. They consider it to be a retail sale, and thus it wouldn't go onto their entertainment license. So there's, in essence, no reason to ask them to come in. I would ask the board that, because of my fault, basically, that we send them a letter stating that. In regards to, matter of fact, we have the letter here. Would you like to read it in?
Mario's and Bentley's, same letter.
Dear Mr. Santanilla, please be advised that I have looked into the matter of whether or not keynote is considered entertainment, and if so, wanting to be included in a special permit. After speaking with someone from the state keynote information office, I learned that keynote is considered a retail sale and not entertainment. With this newly acquired information, I spoke in with the planning board members, and they determined that there will be no need for you to amend your special permit that has been issued to Bentley's Bistro. It is unfortunate that there was confusion, and the board apologized for any inconvenience this may have caused. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact this office.
Just wanted to make sure that with the board's approval to send that.
That's great.
And with that, I don't believe I have any more. Robin, do we have any?
Just need to sign that.
Yep.
And there's a letter going to Mario's, however, it needs a little bit of a change in it, for the same thing. I did leave a message today that they didn't have to go forward with their special permit. So when you come in, remind me and you can sign this.
Yep, in that way there, we'll take care of both of those, and at least anything in the future coming in, we'll realize that keynote is not part of entertainment whatsoever, so we don't have to include that in the special permit. I did ask Robin, we pulled up an entertainment license from Springfield, and we've been talking about possibly adjusting our restaurant special permit application to include a section in there that asks if they're going to do any entertainment, and what type of entertainment it's going to be. So that way there, it's actually on their request. With that, I have nothing else. Michael?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.